Okay. And at five thirty, I recall the meeting to audit.
Do you believe it? Should I select the currently will believe this?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is the approval of the minutes from September twelfth meeting. I look for a motion.
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to accept the minutes.
Bond makes a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second.
Accepted by Rebecca. And any word in discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oath, none, vote of carrots. Okay, first order of business on the court is the Board of Trustees, trust funds.
Thank you.
Amanda, please.
Thank you, I'm making my quarterly appearance, which didn't happen this summer because it was gone quite a bit, but now I'm here, just for transparency, just to tell you what's going on with the trust funds. I did make one copy, so you can all pass and share, but it just shows the six trust funds that are at Vanguard and how they're doing, which is pretty well, we're diversified according to, you know, New Hampshire state law, so we have stocks and bonds. You're all probably watching the stock market and going, oh my gosh, it was down a thousand points, what's going on? Well, when stocks go down, bonds go up, so we're not, all of our eggs are not in one basket, we're not all in stock basket, we have bonds as well, so that we're not, you know, we're not immune to the vicissitudes of the market, however, we are in an excellent position to where the, you know, ride them very well. So, um, a couple of things. Our interest rate on our CRFs, our capital reserve funds, which are not the trusts, those are separate. Capital reserve funds are in money market accounts at Meredith Village Savings Bank. Our interest rates went up, as we all know, the rate, interest rates are going up, so don't get too excited, we went from something like a point two to a point four. Okay, yeah, I know, it's just slightly better than hiding it away in your mattress, but it is slightly better. But it is something positive and in a good direction. Another thing that we trustees have done since I last saw you is we have gone paperless. I do have papers in my lap, which will be coming from Meredith Village, but not from Vanguard. We, well, we'll be, Vanguard now, in the year 2022, charges fees to mail you paper statements, which you can get online for free. So in the interest of saving the town of Ashland money, it was about twenty bucks per account, we are on paperless, which means come the time for the audit, we trustees of the trust funds will be turning in a USB drive, which is not a ton of paper. We will have some because the CRFs at Meredith Village are still on paper accounts. And the last thing is just kind of a reminder, it's going on two years now that we've had accounts at legal. As you may know, as I told you, and some of you were around back then, there were, there are ten trusts that the town of Ashland has. You see six on the Vanguard list. The other four are still at legal. In 2020, we discovered trend, uh, some issues with half of the trusts. One, of course, was Scrivner, five of the ten. And of course, Scrivner cleared legal fairly quickly, we all, it was depleted, it had to go to a town vote, which was really more of just a, uh, done, you know, as a practice. But, um, that has been cleared up, but we still have four that are at legal of those five, the ten. It's now going on two years. The four that are at legal, two are seminary, cemetery care funds, perpetual care funds, for our cemetery, which I don't know why the trustees of the trust funds have that. That cemetery is not under the purview of the town, that cemetery was privatized in nineteen twenty, something like that, we weren't around when it happened. But I don't know why we are holding those funds, because they are not funds that Ashland Town Cemetery trustees can expend. They have a private board of trustees at that cemetery. So we've been trying to get that resolved for two years, it's the lawyer. The other issue that's also at the lawyer is there's two trusts, the Fordway-Chini and Pauline Tacker Trust, which is for the benefit of the library, and they do not have the town's tax ID number on them. Now, what tax ID number do they have? I don't know, I don't, I can't say the magic words when I call the investment houses, you know, I can't punch in the right number, I know the town's tax ID number, that doesn't work, and they say, no, that's wrong. I, I don't know what the problem is. I do know, I have been told, that we would need the judge to order the investment houses to, to release those funds to us. And that's why they've been at legal now for two years. So, we're coming into election season, as we all know, which means that all of the ballot and issues will be going before the lawyer to be sure that, you know, they, they read correctly on our ballot, you know, and that will push, of course, these funds that need to be resolved to the back of the list for Ashland, because they have to look at all of our ballots first, you know. So I'm just kind of here again saying, you know, come on, guys, it's been about two years, can we get some of this stuff read and cleared? And it's nothing I can do, and, and I'm just kind of asking you, I guess, to kind of push that if you can.
So I, I have a question.
Yes.
We saw there was a withdrawal on one of the cemetery funds.
No, you didn't, because there hasn't been, not, not, not on the ones that we have, not on, um, not on Green Grove or Crimmingsbury, which are the two that we have.
I mean, it wasn't a great amount of money, we just assumed that it was something for perpetual care.
It couldn't have been on either one of those, because I didn't direct it. Oh, first one. We have Crimmingsbury.
Withdrawal of two hundred and twenty-five dollars, I don't know if they're charging us to maintain the fund.
No, which fund is it?
It's the Green Grove Cemetery. And the balance on that is nineteen six, uh, capital gains on it was.
That's a very old statement, I'm looking at a balance in August, it's got a balance of twenty-two one forty. What year is that?
Uh, through December twenty-third first, that's twenty-one.
Oh, that's, that's, okay, so it's.
So there was a two hundred and twenty-five dollar withdrawal, we just assumed it was something for perpetual care.
My, no, 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 because I haven't been directed. If that would have been a check that I would have physically, or, well, I would have had, who's managing this? This is UBS, I would have have had to authorize UBS to release that, and you would have seen that as a check, may I, what are you looking at, are you looking at an MS nine or?
MS nine.
Yeah, can I see that, what you're talking about, please? Thank you.
Right on the very top.
Sure, my guess is the two twenty, two twenty-five might be charge, charges for what we're charged, let me see.
Well, I think it could be that, could you find out and tell us about it?
I'd be glad to, yeah, I know that Walter Durak does the MS nine, but my guess is that's the fees, which is another reason we moved everything to Vanguard is to get rid of those fees, that we were getting charged an awful lot of fees.
That's a lot of fees for a whole nineteen thousand dollars.
No, if you can, if you can get, keep it, you wouldn't throw it away. Some of the fees, though, we, like the dog at scholarship, for example, was just to the point where it, it had to, it was depleted by fees.
Well.
But I'd be glad to look into that, sure.
We were wondering if the, uh.
No, there wasn't any.
The money that was there was for perpetual fund, maybe somebody had put that money there years ago, and it's been accruing interest.
Well, that's what does happen, is how perpetual care funds work. However, we would have only released those funds if they were released from the account, if that was a true, I think, I think it's a fee basis is what I think that is. But if it were released for perpetual care, we would have had to order UBS to send us a check for that amount, a paper check, and we would have handed it to the trustees of the cemetery to expend it, because we had no purview on the cemetery, which is again why I'm wondering why the trustees of the trust funds are holding these perpetual care trusts, because, because the town has, has no purview, you have no purview, the town has no purpose, private.
The money got there somehow, we have to solve it.
I don't believe, I don't believe that the money got to the cemetery. I believe that that fee is taken, went to UBS.
Well.
I don't believe that that went to the cemetery.
That's what it says here, purpose cemetery, perpetual care.
That's the purpose of the fund. That's the purpose of the fund, but does it have a check number by it?
Oh, no, it doesn't.
That's why I mean, it was not released as from the fund. That purpose of the fund is a perpetual care cemetery trust, that's the purpose of the fund. And that, my assumption for that two hundred something is that that was the annual cost that UBS charges to maintain that fund in their house. But it did not go to the cemetery. It wasn't released from the fund. Funds can only be released from that fund if Walter or Lisa or I tell them to. It can't leave UBS.
Unless they're charging you that for a fee.
When they're charging it for a fee, it's staying at UBS, it's not going out.
So we need to know that.
Yeah, no, I'd be glad, I'm almost positive that's what that is, but I would certainly be glad to able to look into that.
Actually, the account has twenty-four thousand dollars in it.
As of today?
Total value, it says total value.
Okay, as of August twenty-second, it had twenty-two one forty.
Well, as we know, things have been.
But you know what, I think the important thing is, is that it's up above, it's not down below.
Thank you very much, you got anything else?
No, I don't have anything else, just those four trusts that have been at legal for a while, I'm just getting, ah, slightly exasperated.
I get it.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Well, you're quite welcome, if you ever have any other questions, let me know, we are meeting September twenty-seventh. I got your checks, we will send them, send them to Patsy after we write them out.
Thank you. You have a fine rest of your day.
Thank you.
Hey, next on the list is affordable roofing, past building question. The gentleman is here.
How you doing?
Come forward and tell us. What's your argument is?
So on, on the job of the Booster Club, the back flat was a rubber roof, and on the, underneath the rubber was three inches of foam, right to the decking. So in order to fasten my materials to that roof, I needed to strap it with a four inch screw down to the decking, so I could put my material on it, so it wouldn't get blown off by the wind. At that time, I contacted who was on contract, which is Ann Barley, and when I contacted her, I left a message on her cellphone in her office. She called me back a little bit later, and I told the whole situation, and she says, well, if that's what you need to do to get the roof done, then go forward with it. And I told her, I gave her a range of what it was gonna be with price and everything like that, and she says, that's fine, as long as, as long as it gets done, gets done correctly. And I said, that's the only way that I'm able to do it. You know, I didn't know that there was other people, like, her name's on the contract, so I thought that's who was telling me what to do, you know what I mean, giving me the go-ahead and all that. So, so I strapped the whole roof out, roofed it, looked good, came out great, spent a lot of time there, and, um, obviously, you know, big boss is trying to get time for putting it on and the material, the strapping and the screws and everything else, which was a total of twenty-seven hundred.
Ann?
So, I'm Ann Barney.
Oh, how you doing?
And I got a call on my cellphone, I don't, I'm assuming it's from you?
Yep, that's me.
And I was told that you needed extra money because you had to shovel the roof.
So, there was the extra money for shoveling the roof, which wasn't that much, but then, at the same time, I told you about the rubber in the back, and how we weren't able to fasten our panels to it. And, and I told you, the only way to be able to do it with the rubber roof on the back, because you have three inches of foam, would be to get some strapping and fasten it down. And at that time, I told you it'd be anywhere roughly between a thousand and fifteen hundred dollars for that, just strapping the roof alone.
Nope.
It's like, you know, in all, I've, I've been working with this company, and I've been doing construction for well over sixteen years, and I've never gone above and beyond to do something when it's not necessary. You know what I mean, that was the only way, and obviously, not gonna take a hit when, you know, I gotta strap the roof to be able to roof it, it's on the contract to do that part, you know what I mean, so.
No.
Not, not, not for the strapping.
No.
But for that section, for that section of roof, which was the rubber section.
What was the name of the answer?
Josh.
Josh, Josh, I just wanna, I'm gonna read to you from our minutes from the meeting.
Yep.
When we approved the purchase of, of your roofing.
Yep.
There was a motion made by myself, seconded by Alan. To accept the proposal to install a metal roof on the Booster Club at a cost of ten thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars.
Yep.
Discussion was Eli Badger, who was the chairman at the time, asked if the proposal noted any possible cost overruns or contingencies. This bonding says there was no such language in the contract. And then we passed it. And it was four to one, and, I mean, four to zero, and abstaining because she is the, is the director of the park, so she didn't vote on it. So that's, and, you know, our responsibility as the taxpayers of city, of town, of Ashland.
I understand.
And we have to go by contracts, the language is not in the contract, it's an overrun, you didn't ask for an overrun, you didn't ask for a modification of the contract, which is one of the reasons why we denied it, and then nothing seemed to change.
So, and I, and I get, you know, modification of the contract and stuff like that, but, you know what I mean, I had a conversation with Ann about the additional cost of the strapping itself.
Sounds like a, you left a message, not a conversation.
Well, she called me back.
I got a, I talked to you on my cellphone, you called me on my cellphone, and said that there was an added cost because you had to shovel off the roof, because this was supposed to happen back in August, and it never happened till February.
Yeah.
I don't have the paycheck.
I think it was like December, December, January-ish, right around there, I know there was a lot of snow, so I know that.
And also, on one of the letters that you sent to us.
Yep.
The amount of money for the strapping that you said you had to do was four hundred and thirteen dollars, about there?
Yeah, so the strapping, the strapping alone ended up being, like, I send receipts.
Yep.
We cut them.
And everything, so I sent the receipts and everything like that, bill to the hours, my boss came up with the total number for the building hours, materials, the labor and all that, which ended up being the twenty-seven hundred.
We didn't see any of that, what we saw was the receipt.
The receipts for the materials itself?
Yeah, that was all we got.
Yeah.
And so we, we got two receipts for four hundred and thirteen dollars, whatever, we'll go with that number.
Yeah.
And then we were asked to pay twenty-seven, and that's, that's a really large difference.
Yes, and, no, and I understand that a hundred percent, you know what I mean? So, obviously, them communicating with, you know, the town of Ashland, and letting them know that, you know, the two receipts for that was the strapping, you know what I mean? And then obviously, pay to get it put on, and then everything else like that comes together, and then there was a little bit of snow removal in there. Yeah.
Do you normally, uh, I'm sorry, Alan.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Do you normally strap a roof when you place a metal roof?
The only time we will strap a roof is if, one, we're going over metal, or, two, going over rubber. So a lot of the times when people put on rubber, there's variations of foam sizes, one inch, two inch, three inch, four inch. So, you know, in order to do it, we have a two inch screw. You can't get a metal roof and screw more than two inches, well, that's a lie. Three inches is the max. So if I'm trying to hit down four inches, there's no type of metal roof screw that I can get, you know what I mean? And I wanna, obviously, the Booster Club, I was there for a while during the winter, and it was windy, real windy. So I didn't want to, I wanted to make sure that those panels were gonna stay, you know, in all reality.
We're not discussing, I mean, the, the, the work is satisfactory.
Yeah.
The, the problem is, is that it was, the cost overrun was not approved by, by this board.
Yeah, and I understand.
And so, those, those things have to be done, and our obligation is to the taxpayers.
Yeah.
So it's the reason why we denied it.
Yep.
And, and I, I can't see any changes in, in, any of that. Alan, you had something?
Yes, and I was gonna ask about the strapping.
Yep.
I, I don't wanna second guess things.
Yep.
When you did the estimate, you must have known that that was a rubber roof.
So, and hear me out on this part, so we had a salesman, Mark DeGouvence, he was our salesman for a long time. Me and him would battle consistently about certain things, because he didn't know as much as we would have liked him to, you know. There were numerous times where I've gone to rubber roofs, and he said that there was just straight tacking under them, and there ended up being foam, right? So, at that line of things, you know, he didn't get up there, he didn't examine it, and when I was up there at first, and I was shoveling it off, it was, it was thirty. I didn't think there was foam under it myself, you know, and then I'm nailing down and hitting the face or everywhere along the edges, but the first panel I went to go put on just sunk right in, and nothing, you know what I mean? At that point, I dug a hole in it to see how far down it was and what I had to do.
Quite frankly, at that point, you should have, and asked for an overrun, and then you had cut it down to the.
See, and, and I, and I understand where you guys come from, and I get a hundred percent, you know, and I'm more along the lines, we usually, like, we do, like, we just at the, the water pump house, or you guys too. You know what I mean, there was no issue there.
There's no complaints there.
And this is the only thing that we had an issue with, was that part, you know, and obviously, I wanna do it right, and do the job, what it says, you know, and usually, I contact someone, we talk about it, and I don't move forward without getting an okay.
But you did.
You know, so, maybe when I talked to you, Ann, it was a miscommunication, you know what I mean? Because the, the only reason I was calling you to begin with was because of that, not because of the snow removal or anything like that, it was because that was the first section that I was doing. I literally, me and all my guys cleared the roof, and I went right to that section, because I wanted to get it done and out of there, because it's the highest section, hardest section, I just wanted to get it done. So, as soon as I hit that, that's when I called you, and I might not have communicated it thoroughly enough, you know what I mean, but that was the main reason for the call.
Well, when the guy came, he did go up on the roof?
Yep. And don't get me wrong, like, he might have went up there, but it doesn't.
Specifically told him about the high wind.
Yeah.
And the roof was torn apart at that time.
Yeah.
And he could physically see it, because we, uh, my crew was repairing it.
So.
I never saw any rubber roofing either.
Now, you never saw the rubber?
No. What, what type of rubber roof are you talking about?
So, so on the back section, on the roof side?
Ice and water seal?
Nope, straight rubber.
On the porch?
Yep.
I didn't know, well, we didn't replace the porch section, it was up high.
Right up the front, and I saw what you guys replaced there.
It was just asphalt.
Yeah, it was asphalt, singles up top, you know what I mean? And then when it comes down to the, I wanna say, the addition to the building, that's where it was rubber, right there.
Yeah, I, I didn't go down that far.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I have one on my house, Steven.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just gonna make one final comment.
Because it's flat.
It would have been nice if someone had come in when we requested it, I don't know how many months ago, we might have been able to not be talking about this the way we are right now.
Absolutely.
As a contractor in the past for thirty-plus years.
Yep.
If I made a mistake, I hate, that's all I'm gonna say. And I, and it's not, it's not easy to, it's not easy to do.
Listen, I would take it, hands down, but I communicated with the person on the contract the way I was supposed to.
Okay, um, that's.
The, the contract was not modified, and the question was asked at the board meeting, and this board accepted the fact that there was no cost overruns in the contract.
Yeah.
And now you, you come in and ask for twenty-seven hundred dollars for strapping. Strapping is probably the cheapest wood in the stockpile. I, I, you said it was four hundred dollars, so I don't, I would guess it's three thousand, three thousand, but at, at any rate, nevertheless.
Yeah, and it was, if I'm skipping, it was discussed that, I'm not sure who brought it to our attention, if there might be a, an extra charge because of the shoveling of the roof.
Yep.
And that was it.
Yeah.
It was nothing to do with materials or anything else, labor to do.
So.
If I'm wrong, I.
I don't know how we resolve this, I'm not authorized to pay out any money, because with the contract that we approved, a certain level of money, I can't just give you money. We can't just give you money.
No, I understand that, you know, you guys worked for the town, and I get it.
It, it's a contract with, with the, with the town, the board voted on it, and it's, it's, it's binding. And like Alan says, if you made a mistake.
This had been discussed at that first meeting when we requested someone to come in and explain.
You know what I mean, I'm, I'm here, just, I was asked this morning to come here, you know what I mean? Because I'm, I'm the one that was there, and I get overworked.
Could have been, could have been adjusted.
Yeah.
If it had happened while the job was going on.
Yeah.
I gotta stop the job and get it approved, then we'd have a meeting to prove it.
Yeah.
It has not been approved, so I can't.
And, and I get that, you know, another thing, you know, if I knew that was the process of doing things, you know what I mean, then I would have went forward, but you gotta remember, too, we were there in the middle of winter, snow coming down heavy.
I think we made the deposit in August.
You, you did, and we were supposed to be there, but we were running behind, and we ended up being there, middle of winter.
But at any rate, uh, I mean, I'm sorry, but that's, that's status.
It's an unfortunate situation all the way around.
Listen, here, I'm, you know what I mean, I was told, come here, you know, I'm not the owner of the company, I just put the roof on to make it look good.
Yep. You did a good job, and that's why, there's no discussion about your labor, your, your work, it's good.
Workmanship, so.
It's, this is a financial thing.
And I understand that a hundred percent.
Thank you.
One more quick thing on the pump house. He wanted me to mention that, we saw him paid from pump house either.
What's this?
I work in the finance department, we haven't received an invoice yet.
So he.
If he sent it to Andrew, did he send it to Andrew?
So, yeah, let me just, uh, real quick, Water and Sewer, Ashland, Mitchellville Cove, he told me that he did send it, it was like two weeks ago, the invoice.
Okay, well, I.
If not, I can have him resend it, I can tell him to resend it in the morning.
Send it to Marissa.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, done.
He just want it right, right on the back of there. Like I said, like, we, we like doing work for you guys, you know what I mean, this was the only thing that, that was it.
Well, we like your work too, and this is just a technical problem.
Yeah, and I get it.
Send it to my email, okay?
Yep. All right. Justin, thank you, no problem, um, thanks for you guys' time, and maybe we'll do a work in the future, I don't, hopefully not here. Have a good day.
Thanks.
Okay, next on the agenda. There's a request for a Board of Health barber shop approval, is somebody here for a barber shop? Not here, it's supposed to be here tonight?
They have a barber shop?
Apparently, it's a no show, we'll have to reschedule it. I don't have any paperwork either, it was supposed to bring it tonight.
I questioned one coming before us.
Request for a Board of Health for barber shop approval, apparently, the quarter selection is the Board of Health.
For the.
So, that's, uh, that's why it's here, but she's not here, so we can't deal with it. Maybe she'll come in a little later in the morning.
Maybe. I bet Fred didn't leave anything.
We can reschedule that. Next thing on the list is authority for the police department to sell used tasers, and apparently, the chief has, has got a, what would you like to tell us about what's going on with the used tasers?
Sure, so we got, we got new tasers, um, a year ago or so, and now we have, uh, I think, eight of them. The old model ones, we got rid of those because the batteries were going, you can't get new ones. Taser has, they're not making parts for them anymore, Axon gives it, Axon is the enrollment, they're not making parts for the X-twenty-sixes and the X-twenty-six P, which is the old model, and they're also not updating their software anymore, for what we say for evidentiary purposes. So that was a big push for us to get newer ones, because we couldn't fix the old ones. So this company, Accredited Security, um, they buy old used tasers and cartridges and batteries and cables and all that, everything that goes with them.
Right.
And, um, they refer them, and then we'll sell them to security companies and other police departments. And, um, they refer them, and then we'll sell them to security companies and, uh, other police departments and things of that nature. So we have this stuff pile of, uh, I think we have seven or eight, uh, X twenty sixes. And, uh, twenty years old cartridges or something like that, we have the batteries and the cables. And they'll pay us a few bucks for all these, all these, uh, pieces, and then they refer them and they resell them.
Did you get a number from them?
Uh, they have a listing of how much they pay depending upon serial number, and we have the newer ones, so they're up to a couple hundred bucks a piece. And then it's only five hundred bucks or so per cartridge. Um, new cartridges are twenty five, and tasers are significantly more than a couple hundred bucks to buy, not brand new. Uh, but they'll give us twenty five or twenty bucks for the cables and things like that, so there's, in the packet, there was a listing of.
Yeah.
Uh, how much they'll give us per each one, and we have.
Oh, I didn't see that.
The serial numbers that I think start with five or whatnot, or two hundred dollars a piece, and those are the ones that we have. Uh, so, I haven't reached out to them to get a full quote from them to find out exactly what they'll give us. Uh, because I need the authority from the board, because they're technically considered weapons, and they're town property.
So, so what you're asking for is authority to get the quote or authority to sell it?
One hundred percent. If you're selling them off the quote, I don't, I'm not gonna sell them off the quote, so we gotta get the quote.
And the longer you wait, the less the worth.
True, and they're just taking up space right now, there's nothing else they can do.
So, um, I think I would move to allow the police chief to, to, uh, sell the used tasers to this company. And, and have the money sent, obviously, to the top.
Go to the general fund.
Go to the general fund, yep.
I, I will make a motion to allow him to get a quote.
Okay, you want a quote, you don't wanna, do you wanna delay it, another meeting?
No, but he needs to get a quote first.
You get a quote and then, you know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with both, you just didn't say quote in your thing, so I'm sorry.
I'll second the motion.
So is it just to?
Gonna get a quote?
And then, and then sell them back.
And sell.
So we're gonna do it all with one vote?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll second that, if that wasn't done.
I think Bob did, it, it's fine, we're all good.
Sure, I did, but that's okay, and you can warn me if happy you second. Uh, I mean, I think it's a good thing that, you know, he's, he's going through the extra effort to move some surplus equipment. Otherwise, we'd just sit in the drawer somewhere, you know, uh, unlike the, the POCs and rec, I mean, not the POCs and rec, but the, uh. Road, road administrator over there, he finds a way to use all that old stuff and build new things with it.
Please, please don't build new things with tracer.
Well, we, I did this, um, I did a similar process with the.
Okay, hold on a minute, we're, we're, we're in a voting boat, please.
Move the question, please.
Move the question, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And, or further, no, no, not, any opposed? None opposed, the motion passes, chief, please, go for it.
We'll do.
Don't, basically, don't, don't make any choice, Alan. Well, we gotta do a little fun, you know, once in a while, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that takes care of that, um, the question of appointment to the Conservation Commission, is somebody here for that? Apparently not, okay, we'll just let that go away too.
I, I don't believe they were invited.
Oh, they weren't invited?
Just have, not, not invited, but not told to come.
Well, if somebody wants to go down to commission, I think we need to do an interview.
We'll get a commission first.
Well, we have one, there, there, there is.
Exists, but there's nobody on it.
Well, there's, there's only two members, so we don't have a quorum, but, uh, that's fine, so we'll just. Put that on the table, table it, I'll, I'll figure the table in. Nobody's caution, I guess it is. Okay, uh, the question on revising the disorderly actions ordinance, uh, I haven't had a chance to, uh, to go over this with, with Devon yet. He's gonna get back to me with some, uh, some, uh, some numbers, so that we could actually. This has to go on a warrant out of, anyways, if you wanna change it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that has to go before the voters, but, uh, I think that we need to. Do something, this, this big cutoff on Thompson Street has taught us some lessons. If you're gonna be doing work in a residential area, you can't be stopped at six o'clock in the morning. And especially on weekends, you know, so, uh, they work on Sundays too. And I don't have a problem if they have a mountain somewhere that's out of town, they wanna start at five o'clock in the morning, six o'clock in the morning, that's fine. But when you're in downtown, I spoke, since we had this little discussion at the last meeting. And, and David put it in the paper, about a few people on the street could not have talked to me, and they were just glad that we were addressing it. And it's been a problem for them up there.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, that's, I'm just talking about it, we're not voting on anything, but that's where we are, we're gonna have to. Come up with some language that separates it, the way it's written in the, in the ordinance now, it's cut blanch, it's for everything. So I don't wanna change it for everything, I just wanna change it for residential, or within a certain area of residential. That's what I like to do, but that's what the board wants, is that be great. Okay, moving on. All business. Oh, no, I have one piece of new business, this thing, uh, Marissa, this is something that would be new business, right?
I don't know, what are you going for?
Uh, the temporary town manager.
Sure.
So, um. As you know, Fred is going in for some surgery, and he may be out for a certain period of time, we have to have a backup, we have to have a plan. And the plan is to temporarily appoint Marissa as temporary town manager while he's absent. In his absence, uh, she'll be able to communicate with him when he's at home, but, uh, at the very least, we have to have. Legally, we have to have somebody there, so, I'm making a motion to, maybe I should make that motion, maybe you should make that motion, somebody else. To make a motion to.
I, I have something to add.
I'll go right ahead, please, I mean, we have to make the motion first, so you can have a discussion on it.
Oh, you would like, okay.
Discussion, yeah. Okay, I'm sorry.
You would like me to make the motion first before we can have a discussion?
Yeah, you make a motion, then you discuss it.
Perfect, that's fine. I make a motion to, uh, uh, appoint Marissa as the acting town manager. During Fred's absence.
Okay, no discussion.
Uh, oh, uh, so, if we don't do this, then we all. Have to sign whatever comes through the office.
Payroll and AP and that, yes.
Everyone was up there down there, every day.
And. And as much as I love hanging out with Marissa, I.
Who else knows the office better than?
Right.
Any further discussion?
So do we have any kind of, like, a timeline or anything like that?
It's temporary, until Fred comes back, you know, I would say when Fred comes back to duty, it's over, we put it into motion.
He should know more Thursday. It's all.
We have to do something tonight.
Yeah, he unfortunately doesn't know more at this time.
Just a menu motion to temporary.
It would be nice if it was a couple of weeks, but we don't know that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's my understanding.
Right. It's, Fred's absent, and if he turns, he's the town manager.
Of course.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm sure he's gonna be available by phone.
Oh, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, and I get a second on that motion?
You haven't yet, no.
No. Go down.
Well. I hate to say this, has it been run by legal, that we're doing this correctly? Or is this coming from Fred himself, so to speak?
I'm not sure on that. So I can check with Walter.
Well, the previous board, it did exactly that when, uh, when Charlie left.
That's a little different story.
It's the same thing, it's a temporary.
Uh, he did.
Only it was a little bit longer.
He did pull out the statute that allows you to do it.
Okay.
And put it in your packet.
Okay, that's a little different.
First paragraph.
It's okay with me, thank you, Marissa. Oh, do you want to see that?
He's got one.
Oh, okay, well.
I forgot, I looked at it earlier.
Oh, well.
So, is this gonna affect anything with what you're doing now, or pay, or?
No.
Any of that kind of stuff?
Basically, all it does is allow me to sign the payroll when, like, Luanne's done with it, and AP, so that the whole board doesn't have to come down and sign them all.
You need somebody to keep the business going, it's important if we do.
I'm sure if there's anything major, we'll be contacted.
Uh, yeah.
I will second the motion.
Okay. And so, because she's my granddaughter, I'm gonna abstain.
Understood.
But, I'm gonna ask the board to vote, are you ready to vote, are any more discussions?
I'm ready to vote.
Okay, ready, Anne? Okay, those are favored, please say aye.
Aye.
And I'll abstain, so you have three, or one exception, which is enough. Thank you. Okay, that's. I've got all kinds of things I'm gonna add here, okay, another thing that came in. The tax maps have been put back up online, so, uh, they finally have got that finished. And if you recall, we put a hold on next year's payments until such time that they've got this up online. So people can actually use it, and now it's up online, so we have to release the funds for next year. So, uh, that's all we have to do, is just, just change our, our status where we had held up the funds. So, the motion would be to, uh, to approve the funds that are due for next year, next, is it next quarter?
And to, uh, release them, so that we can put them in the budget for next year.
Put them in the budget, yeah, so we're gonna put them back in the budget, uh, and, uh, release those funds. They were, they were in the limbo until they finished their work. So, the motion is to put the items in the budget, all, pardon, and you got a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second, bye. Ms. Hotley, um, any further discussion? No further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Not opposed, none opposed, okay. Any other select board items? Any select board items?
No, sir.
Okay. So that conducts our business for the evening, um, we need to go into non-public.